Can you still hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay.
Um, well, yeah. Carrie, can you still hear us? I don't think if your mic's on.
Yes, I can hear you. Did you say you can hear me okay, Scott?
Um, I can hear you. Um, Gary, Jim, uh... Jim's trying to get his mic to work.
Oh, okay.
Now, huh, now try it.
Now, I think he can hear you.
Yeah, you were on mute, so...
Okay.
I don't, should be able, you should be able to control it over there by your desk.
Yeah, I got the call. It's red and the talk is green. Okay. We're all set to go then. Okay. I'll repeat. I would like to welcome everyone here today and our viewing audience to the August 27th, 2020 Meeting of the City of Davenport Zoning Board of Adjustment. Your participation in city government is appreciated and welcome. If you have a pager or cellphone, please turn it off now, even if it's on silent mode and may interfere with the room's electronics. My name is Jim Reistracher. I'm chairman. To my immediate left is Tom Quim, member, and to my immediate right is Angela Lebach, and Carrie Strahill is on, is off-site. Staff President Scott Coops. The zoning board of adjustments is a five-member judiciary board established by the state law. We are appointed by the mayor and confirmed by the city council to serve without compensation for a five-year term. We normally meet twice each month to hear appeals involving hardships from strip application of current zoning laws. We also grant special exemptions and rule on variety of discretionary permits. Is there any corrections to the meetings from the last meeting? I guess. Okay, okay. Seeing none. Can I get a motion for approval? Any a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
It passed.
Aye.
You know, I was informed by one of our members that, uh, our old business is, uh, HV 20-05 is put off until September 24th. Scott?
I'm having technical difficulties. What was the question?
Um, I, in, in talking to, uh, one of our commissioners...
Yes, September 24th is when those two items will be coming back. That's correct.
Okay.
And that's at the petitioner's, um, request.
Do we need a motion to do that?
No, they can remain table.
Okay, okay. Okay. Now, new business. Is the applicant here, or applicants? For, apparently, is, well, Mr. Gary Caldwell? Okay. For Speedway? Okay. I guess I'm gonna read the case. Request HV 20-07 of Gary Caldwell on behalf of Speedway LLC for hardship variance at 8303 Northwest Boulevard for assigned package allowing. Number one, a second or additional freestanding sign being sign A. A freestanding sign forty foot in height at 260 square feet, also beginning sign A. And three is crossed out, right, Scott?
That's correct.
Okay. And four, variance for parking lot signings allowing signs L, M, and N at five foot and a sign P fifteen square foot. Section 17.12.050 and .060 limits the property to one free standing sign twenty-five feet in height with a sign face that no more than a hundred square feet. And a parking lot directional signage to five foot in height with a sign face no more than four square foot. Okay.
Um, Carrie, can you see the PowerPoint?
No.
No. Okay, so it says...
But I, I, I mean, I...
It says I'm sharing my screen. So it says I'm sharing my screen, but it's showing you, I think, the go-to-meeting stuff and not the actual PowerPoint. Is that correct? Or do you have nothing?
Uh, I, well, actually, I actually, it wasn't working, so I actually stopped using my iPad, but, but I read through, I mean, I read through the report.
All right, thank you.
I'm, I'm okay.
All right, thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, Scott, you want to present the statement again?
Um, Scott Coops, Community Planning, Department of Neighborhood Services, our new division name. Um, this is a request that was for a number of variances last time. Uh, this time they have only asked for a second freestanding sign and, which would exceed size and height, and some smaller variances for freestanding parking lot signs or directional signs. The... The second sign that's freestanding is a sign A, which is closer to Farm and Fleet. That size is still the same size as originally proposed, but the one closer to, the freestanding sign closer to the stoplight and intersection, that is now meeting our requirements. It's only twenty-five feet tall and one hundred square feet or less. This diagram just shows the two signs. Uh, the one on the left is now being proposed. The one on the right is what it used to be. It's, it meets our requirements. It's not a, a large change, but it is nice to have, um, that sign meet our requirements. This slide here is H and A. Again, sign H on the left meets our requirements, and sign A is a second sign, and it also is two hundred and fifty square feet and forty feet tall. And this, again, just a reminder of the directional signage. Um, the two smaller signs here are five square feet each. Um, the ordinance requires four square feet each, and then the one on the right is fifteen square feet, and again, four would be the requirement. This is a new exhibit here that the petitioner submitted. It shows visibility. So if you're the car located over here, this picture below corresponds to that location, and it's looking at the sign, which is over here to the left by Flying J. Um, these other signs here are in scale. The first one is their proposed sign H, which is the, the one needing the variance for the height and the area. Uh, and then it shows the Flying J sign, and then the next one shows the love sign. And this is just a little more zoomed-in area, so maybe you can see this starting point a little bit better here where that car is, and then the sign is over here. So the two, the three signs on this image here, the graphic, all three, uh, two of them have already received hardship variances, and the, the one on the left, which is before us today, that would have to have a hardship variance to be approved. Um, so they're comparing, uh, their sign H here today to, to other signs which have been approved by hardship variance. This chart, uh, shows their, uh, the sign, um, council's recommendations for signage and distances. The petitioner can address that later when they're speaking. Um, again, we did our notices, no complaints. Um, our findings have stayed the same. Um, we do have this motion slide, um, that I would like you to consider this request separately for the different items. So the first motion could be, um, to look at just the extra freestanding sign, should the site have an extra freestanding sign. The second motion would be if the first motion's approved, what size and height should that sign be allowed at? What's they're proposing, or does the board wish to reduce it somewhat? The third motion is a sign for the, the, I'll call it the directional signs. Um, if you wanted to take that larger directional sign separately, that would be up to the board to do. So these are recommended motions. You don't have to do things in this manner, but, um, it's probably the best way to take care of it. Um, and again, our so, planning staff report is that, um, the sign doesn't meet our requirements, and, uh, it recommends per denial.
No, Scott, I have a question. Looking at the love sign, you see an Arby's and you see, I, I can't see, but something that makes the sign taller. Would they have to come back to us if they put, for an example, I don't mean the Subway or McDonald's or sign above their sign when they get higher on the height?
And, and increase in area in this case would need to be submitted to us, and an increase in height would be, need to be submitted, because they're beyond what is allowed. One, the sign's an extra sign to begin with. Two, uh, both the area and the height are already non-conforming as well. So, yeah, anything, any change to the sign, other than just swapping out a sign face, would have to come back to this board.
That's what I need to know. Okay, thank you.
I have a question, Jim.
Pardon?
Go ahead, Carrie.
So, the only thing that's changed here, Scott, is that this, the smaller sign has been brought in to meet the standards, but other, other than that, everything remains the same as it was previously, correct?
Yeah, that's my understanding, and that is correct, yes.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, go ahead.
Um, where is the love sign in relationship to where your sign would be? You know, are they, like, across the highway from each other, or?
A question more for the petitioner, but I'll answer it right now, since the petitioner hasn't addressed the board yet. Um, and they can get into it a little bit more if you would like, or you can wait until the petitioner has a chance to speak. Uh, but, so the, the love sign is, let's go back to another image here. Well, this one might be harder to see, but, uh, so the love sign is over here towards the end of their developed area, and the flaw, the, the sign that is proposed today and is the subject of the variance is, you know, rather close to the, uh, Farm and Fleet, actually. It's way at the northern, northwestern part of their property.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Do we have any more, uh, questions from, Scott? Okay. Advocate, you want to give us your name and present your case?
My name is Gary Caldwell, project manager with Speedway. Wanted to... If I need to project, I can't, I can't.
Yeah. Now try it. Gary.
You guys hear me better now? There we go. Okay, sorry. So, um, Gary Caldwell, project manager with Speedway, here to present the case again for, um, our signage variance. Um, so one of the things I wanted to touch on again is just, um, I don't know if everybody knows that, but for retail petroleum signage is very important. I mean, if they can't see what we are, where we are and what we're offering, then, I mean, I don't know how we can offer our services properly and how we can compete in an area where there are signages that already draw, you know, other customers over. Um, we need, uh, visibility for drivers to see us coming off the highway, uh, in particular, the truck traffic that's already coming. Um, if we only have the goalposts on premise side at twenty-five feet, they can't even see what diesel prices we're offering to them and enough time to make the adjustment to turn into our property. Um, the other, uh, thing we were mentioning is, is that we're not really arguing that we should have it because Love and Flying J has it. They have it because they need it, and we need it as well. Um, they actually have closer frontage to the highway. We don't. And so, um, while the terrain is flat, um, you still can't really see where we are and what we're offering until it's almost too late. Um, the first exhibit, Scott, that shows the, um, the graph... So, um, there, there's a ta...
If you could show the table, uh, slide as a table?
So, based on the table here, you know, for the viewer recognition time, it actually suggests that we have a three hundred and twelve square foot sign, but we're actually only requesting a two hundred and sixty square foot sign. Um, although it would be forty feet high and two hundred and sixty square feet, we still believe that that will give our, um, customers enough time to see what we have, see what we're offering, and to safely, you know, turn into our property and our site. Um, so, again, we're asking for, uh, the variance, uh, so that we can stay competitive in the area and make sure that we can draw customers to our site.
Commissioners, you got any questions with, uh, for Mr. Caldwell?
Uh, just wanted to do, uh...
Can you hear me now?
Oh, there is. Because I'm the master of control.
You are. Um, do, uh, so we have Loves, we have Flying J across. Do they have just one sign, or do they have two signs?
They have two signs.
They each have two signs. They've had...
Correct.
Okay. And that is, that right there is to scale, your second sign A, you're saying is smaller in scale than the two signs from your competitors.
They both have nine hundred and twenty square, about nine hundred and twenty square feet or so. We're only asking for two hundred and sixty. Um, I believe it's eighty, Love's is eighty square, uh, eighty feet high. I think the Flying J is like sixty-five feet high. Ours is only forty.
Correct.
Okay. Yeah, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay. Okay. Well, thank you, Mr. Caldwell.
So, I, I guess I do, I have a question for Mr. Caldwell.
We got another commissioner.
So, when you look at property like that... I'm sorry, am I interrupting someone?
No, no, you're good. Continue.
Oh, okay. Uh, so just, I mean, just a question for Mr. Caldwell. So when you look at property like that, I mean, you purchase that property, you look in advance for, you know, what you're gonna need, and you also know what the qualifications for signage are. So, I'm, I mean, I'm just curious, that you, you must have known prior to that that you were gonna need bigger signs, if, because of what, because of what you're saying, that you need to draw people in and they're not gonna be able to see you, if you have signs that are the size that we require. I'm just curious what your thoughts are when you, when you purchase that property.
So, whenever we go through the process of purchasing a property, we have a due diligence phase where we do our research. Um, we did meet, actually, uh, with the city of Davenport in regards, and, um, I mean, it wasn't anybody in this body, but we were told that that shouldn't be an issue, given the area and what our competitors had. So, we do what's called, um, an ISI meeting. It's an initial site investigation meeting, and we sit down with the city, and we speak with them, and we see how they feel, what they're gonna allow, what they're not gonna allow, and that's how we kind of make our decisions moving forward.
Okay, so, so in other words, I mean, when you assume, when you bought the property, that you were gonna, you were gonna ask for a variance for signage?
Yeah, we do.
I mean, I, I guess that's why I'm getting, that you knew ahead of time that that's what you were going to have to do to have the property to where, uh, to what you wanted.
Correct. So when we look at it, we look at what variance is and things that we may need, and then we apply for those variances as such.
Yeah. Uh, I'm just trying to make the point that, that, you know, that Davenport has, they have those regulations for signage. So, um, and I'm just trying to, trying to grasp where people come in, because a lot of times it's like, you know, you see other property, whatever, you go, well, they got it, they have it, they have it, or whatever. And, uh, technically, you know, signs don't get approved by competition. So, I, I was just curious of where you were coming from, from the beginning. So, thank you for that.
Okay, no problem.
Am I allowed to make a comment?
Yeah, Mr. Caldwell, are you?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. You want to give us your name, sir?
Yes. Hi, my name's Tom Halleck. I represent, uh, uh, Speedway on the real estate side. And, and just wanted to clarify, we have not purchased the property yet. We're, we're still through the due diligence phase, and then we'll close on the property once that due diligence is complete. And when we look at, uh, property, um, yes, we, we try to understand the ordinances and that we'd have to request the variance, but then also we look at that the competition, does it look like they were, received, uh, hardship variance? And in this case, we saw that they did, and another reason why we continue to pursue the property. So I just wanted to clarify that we have not closed on the property just yet.
Oh. Thank, thank you. I appreciate that.
Anyone else want to, from the applicant? Okay. Well, is there anybody in the audience in favor of this request? I guess I see. Come on up, sir, if you want to give us your name and...
I'm John Correles. I'm the owner of the property, 8370 Hillendale Road. I'm also the broker on the selling side. I represent the Danglerys Wicker family. And, uh, as a neighboring property owner, I'm in favor of having, uh, this type of user in there. They're a class operation. Um, I was telling Tom that when we go to Chicago, we have two Speedway stops that we make, and, uh, have to do that now. But, uh, they're, they're a good company. Um, I, I brokered, uh, the Loves. They're a good company. And I did Flying J, and, years ago. And, uh, it's not a perfect world, and sometimes the zoning ordinances just don't meet the needs of the users, and they're the ones that are putting the money out to take the risk, to put their business in a, in a location. And, you know, for the sake of a little bit bigger sign, I would like to see you grant the change so that they can satisfy their due diligence and, um, uh, move forward on the purchase of property and become viable participants, residents of the city of Davenport. So...
I'm wearing two hats, but it's okay. Is there anyone in the audience opposed to this petition? I don't see anybody opposed. And applicant, have you got any final comments? Or applicants, I should say? No? All right. Okay. Well...
Mr. Reistracher?
Yes.
So I have my call button on, so I don't know if you saw it, but, um, I, I would like just to make, make clear what the, the planning and zoning's procedure is on, uh, pre-application meetings, when we come in and review a property ahead of time. Um, we would let them know what the sign code allows. Um, we would let them know they can apply for a hardship variance, uh, but we, we, we draw the line at, uh, we would never give a percentage or say you'll get the variance. I just wanted to make that clear. Um, I don't think that's what Gary said, but I just wanted to make sure you, you know that we don't promise variances ahead of time or anything like that.
Scott, have, have, did they come in front of you to present there before they came in front of us?
The pre-application meeting was held in Public Works, and it mostly focused on the engineering and is this site allowed for, uh, this use for this fuel stop? And so the bigger picture things, things like, like the details, like a sign, um, we give them the sign code and, you know, we let them know what the requirements are, but it wasn't really the focus of the meeting.
Okay. Okay. You know, I want to talk to the board members. You know, uh, Scott presented other options that, uh, or motions. Do we want to address them, or go on, or what's your feeling?
Um, I, you know, I, I, I think that looks to me like we can break this into three different motions, and we can kind of, first of all, approve the additional sign, and then I think we can approve the size of that sign, or we can even maybe, uh, maybe suggest changes to the size of that additional sign. So, uh, and then, of course, the site signage, additional site signage, you know, the directional signage is another thing that we could look at. I, I think it'd be a good idea to talk about each three separately.
Carrie, what's your feeling on this?
No, I agree.
Angela?
I agree.
Okay, okay. Well, and I, I, I would guess that we need to address the motions, and who would like to, um, make the motion? Do we got, Scott, do we got to do the motion separate on all three of them? Okay, okay.
Well, I would make a motion, um, for consideration purposes, to approve the request for an additional freestanding sign.
Are you addressing the motion number one?
Yeah, I would, I would make that motion.
Do I have a second? Do we need a roll call on that?
Yes, we'll do a roll call, and just for clarification purposes, this motion is to allow sign A, which is two hundred and sixty square feet in area and, um, sixty-five feet tall.
Forty, stop.
Uh, forty, sorry.
Forty feet tall.
Forty feet tall, I'm sorry. And, um, and it just for, to allow the sign right now, well, the, if it's approved, then you guys can, um, as the motion's worded, it's not gonna, the, uh, the motion won't approve the size and height yet, but this is the sign A. Just, yeah, motion to allow sign A.
Carrie, do you have a comment?
Is it the smaller one?
No, that's, this is a motion, the smaller one doesn't need a hardship variance.
Oh, okay. They brought that in. Okay, I'm, I'm sorry.
Yep, that's fine.
I got you.
I will, um...
Do you need a second?
I, yeah, we have a second. Uh, Strahill?
Yeah.
Quinn?
Yes.
And Lebach?
Yes.
So the ma, motion passes. Now, the board can consider what size they would like it to be and have a discussion on that.
Can I comment before they make a decision there? Very loud, or no?
No.
I, I think you, I think you, I think, uh, the chairman worded it last comment. Um, so, yeah, once they start the voting, yeah.
That's why I asked that question.
Yeah, once they do the motion, then it's the last, I mean, it's...
So the, so the, the additional sign has been approved, and now we're just talking about the, the size of that sign.
Right.
I guess my, my only comment...
You can, you can approve it at what they're proposing, or you can suggest something else.
My comment would be that it's, you know, the sign that they're proposing is already smaller than, you know, adjacent signage, uh, is currently, so I would make a, I would make a motion to approve the, uh, the size and height of the sign as, as currently shown.
Is it? I guess it's got, Tom, is that the forty-foot square or height sign that we're talking about?
Whatever is currently...
It's sign A.
Yeah, whatever, whatever they're currently proposing for sign, for that size of that sign, I would make sure to approve.
So it's forty feet tall, two hundred and sixty square feet.
I'll second.
Okay. Have a vote, uh...
No, typically, there's discussion after the first and second.
Oh, I'm sorry. Board discussion, excuse me.
Right. So, question for, for Scott, is it Carrie? So how far out of, um, regulation is it? Let me pull up the staff report. I think that might have happened. What they're proposing?
Yeah, I think the staff report gives the percent of increase, I think, and I can look that up here a minute.
Yeah, I, I had it up earl, I had it up earlier, but then when I, it was interfering, I think, with the call, so that's why I shut, I shut my iPad off, so...
Looks like twenty-five feet high?
Twenty-five.
I think so.
Sorry for the delay. I'm, I'm looking to see if I can't find it. I don't, I typically do the percent of increase. I don't know if I did write off hand. I'm not seeing it.
I'm just trying to figure out how far off we really are.
Well, it's over a hundred percent increase for the sign, because you're only allowed one hundred square feet, and they're proposing two hundred and sixty, so...
Oh, okay.
The, the other thing, well, never mind. The, the other thing, well, never mind. And I guess one thing that wasn't brought up is the proposed sign A is way over by the Flying J. I mean, it, that sign could potentially be moved closer to the stoplight. And the other thing is the sign H already does have gas pumping diesel prices on that side as well.
So what type of motion do we need for that, for the, are going by motion?
The motion has been, I'll put on the table, it's just up for discussion. So right now, the motion is to approve the size and height of sign A as proposed, which is 40 feet tall and 260 square feet. And so once your discussion is done, we'll do roll call.
Well, you know, I still haven't gotten the answer of what Carrie asked. How much more is it? What'd you say, 100%?
No, I, well, I'm, I'm good. I'm good. It's 100%.
Yeah, so it's, it's, it's 260 square feet when only 100 square feet is allowed, so it's 206, it's 2.6 times more.
Yeah.
Okay.
So it's double, yeah, double the size, so, okay.
Yeah, and under the staff comments, I believe they're saying it's a 60% increase in height and 160% increase in area.
That's right.
Yeah, so it's under staff comments, under item four, which, you know, obviously is a, a large increase over what the ordinance allows, but I, I'm comparing it to some of the signages that have been erected in the past and it appears that it's smaller in scale than what's already there. So I was, my motion was just to approve the sign as currently shown, as currently proposed.
Okay. Well, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Scott, you want to call a roll?
Quinn?
Yes.
And just a reminder, this is just for the size of the second sign, which has already been approved. Layback?
Yes.
Straight Hall?
No.
And Reisstraffer? That motion passes three to one. So now the directional signs would need to be addressed.
So that option three, Tom?
Yeah, for that one, yeah, I would make a motion that we approve the directional signage as proposed by the petitioner.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Any discussion?
I'm sorry. I see none.
Just from a, from a, from a potential patron of a, of a business like that, it is nice to have, you know, there's a lot of traffic, trucks, cars, all kinds of different traffic. It is nice to have that additional directional signage, so you make sure you get to the right place. I know it's probably a sign that's above and beyond what we allow by, by ordinance, but it would seem to me that it's comparable to, you know, adjacent properties and it seems like a good idea to me. I, I'm in favor of approving the directional signage.
Well, so my personal comments, I was in the business for 30 years and signage means everything and, but you have a bigger operation than I had, but I think that the other competition got bigger signs and you're a little bit below what they are and so, signs mean a lot, but I don't like a lot of signs, but you're not requesting a lot of signs, so I'm in favor of option number three. So if you want to present, Tom, the motion?
Yeah, I'll, I'll make a motion to...
Right, it's been moved and seconded, so Layback?
Yeah, yes.
Straight Hall?
No.
Quinn?
Yes.
And Reisstraffer?
Yes.
Okay.
Motion's passed. Well, I guess that's...
So the petitioner can proceed to get a building per, a sign permit tomorrow and we'll, we'll pass that information along to the sign count.
Thank you. Thank you for coming in.
Thanks for your consideration. Thank you.
So I see no other business. I motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Adjourned.
So you control that or do I? Thank you all.